Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Village of Tuckahoe Planning Board Meeting, January 18th, 2022. Nancy, please take attendance.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Barra.
Present.
Aaron Berg.
Present.
Commissioner Wolfson.
Present.
Mitchell. Out?
I don't think she's here yet, no.
Okay, and Commissioner Carpenter?
Present.
Chairman Leo?
Present. So this evening, we have the approval of the mini minutes. We have 225 White Plains Road, which is a subdivision, 170 Marbledale Road, which is a site plant to construct a retaining wall, and 200 White Plains Road, which is the site plant to renovate the soccer field. So at this point, can we start with 225 White Plains Road? The applicant here yet?
I just got a text about Luca Panis trying to get in now.
Okay. Is Dave in? Hey, Barbudy?
I'm here.
Oh, hey, Dave. How are you? Want to start? So we'll do 170 Marbledale Road?
Certainly. Let me try this. I've tried to share my screen.
Yep.
Can we see that?
Not yet. Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. David Barbudy, Architect, here tonight for automotive upholstery. What we have in front of you slightly is a proposed retaining wall along the rear portion of the property. And if I can zoom in. So basically. Having some technical difficulties. So as I said, well, basically, we're here tonight to construct a retaining wall. Basically, if you can see my screen, where my hand is, there's a hash or dash line. That is the area that we're looking to push the wall back. It's roughly 10 to 12 feet. On the northern end, there is a deteriorated stone retaining wall, which we propose to take down behind the building and construct a new concrete retaining wall that will have a stone face to it. So basically, we're going to emboss a, or on the form work, we're going to create a stone face look, which is one of the comments from Planning Board Work Session. If I could try to find it here. I apologize. I'm not used to Zoom meetings again.
No worries. Take your time. I think it's your last page.
Yep, there we go. So basically, it's going to be a stamp pattern on the form work. So it will resemble an actual ashlar pattern of a stone retaining wall for the areas that we're going to create. One of the other comments that we also had.
Dave, before you leave that, can you go back to that drawing just for a second?
Sure.
Can you kind of explain to the public the height of the retaining wall? I mean, it's not going to be, you know, in certain areas, you're not going to see it. In certain areas, it's going to be 10 feet tall, correct?
Right. So basically, what's going to happen is there is rock outcroppings throughout the rear of the parcel. What's going to happen is wherever we hit soil, we're going to need a retaining wall, which is going to be roughly around 10 feet tall because of the slope of the rear property, depending on how much rock we chip. If it's a stable rock, we won't need a retaining wall. So I know at the southern end, there's another development going on. And we're proposing a leg. If you see my hands, we're proposing a leg of our concrete retaining wall, depending on what happens with the adjacent property owner and their building location. That may be diminished.
No, what I'm trying to understand is if you got the long with the retaining wall in the back there, right? It's going to be far, if I recall correctly, it's going to be some areas that are going to be, let's say, 2 feet tall. Then as certain other areas, what you're going to be closer to 6, 7 feet tall, right? Can you kind of walk us through like where the high points are, where the low points are?
If I can kind of find photographs. Can you see that?
No.
No, okay.
We'll see. You have to stop sharing and then reshare again.
Okay. No, wrong picture. Okay, so this is probably one of the better pictures. So back over, can you see that?
Yep.
The photo. So where I'm circling, that is where most of the rock outcropping is. That's probably solid rock towards the rear of the property. So that will most likely be a solid rock, which will not recreate a retaining wall. Most of the retaining wall will be behind the building. And I'll go back to my drawing. So if the building is at this point to the northern end, most of that is soil, which will need to be retained by a retaining wall. I'm not quite sure what the rock state, what the rock stability is. We won't know until we get into excavation and hammer and chipping. So that's why we're showing it for the entire length of the rear of the property. My assumption is going to be probably the most southerly portion, probably for at least 50% of the lot, is going to be stabilized rock and will not be a retaining wall. So once I get back over to the lower end, to the north, based on the soil conditions, we're going from a one-foot-high wall, a two-foot-high wall, and then I'm going to jump to a 10-foot-high wall behind the building. And it's got to be pretty consistent at that point to the end of the building that I'm thinking. Once we get to the southern portion towards the adjacent property, based on the topo, I'm showing a higher wall, but I'm anticipating solid rock, and it will be exposed rocks at that point.
Are you going to have to chip out that boulder that you showed in that photograph earlier in order to get?
Yeah, I think so. So let me go back to one of my earlier slides. So that boulder is probably right around this location.
You're not sharing yet.
Excuse me?
You're not sharing yet. We're not.
Sorry about that. Where'd I go? I lost you.
Okay, it's coming up. Oh, now it's your.
One second. So you see me now?
I can see your.
Screen?
Yeah, I see your screen. I see your different files you have in your folder there. A USB drive E.
Did it come up?
No, we still have your.
USB? All right, let's try it again. I'm sorry.
No worries. Take your time.
There we go. How are we doing now?
Perfect.
Okay, sorry about that.
Second time's a charm.
It's been eight months without Zoom meetings, so.
Come back.
It's rough. So that boulder in the photograph is around this area, this location? So that is where I think it's basically midpoint of the property. From the midpoint south, I'm believing that based on what I see in the parking lot itself, that that will be all solid rock as I push back the 8 or 10 feet towards the rear of the property.
Okay, so you'll be chipping that boulder away, and that will act as your retaining wall, hopefully?
That is correct. That is correct. Some of the other comments from the Planning Board Work Session were stormwater retention, which we have provided on our SP drawing, which will have an overflow to an existing catch basin, which goes to the storm sewer, and it'll be at a time rate coming out. It's a smaller pipe coming out. One of the other questions of the Planning Board Work Session was the chain link fence along the front of the property, along the yard. Presently, it sits in the city right of way. We are proposing to push it back, and it will be a chain link, black chain link fence, you know, on the private property.
Yeah, when we had that discussion, I was hoping for something a little more decorative, a little more attractive than a chain link fence with some slats inside there.
Well, I don't have, I don't believe I have slats. So what I, what I basically did, I looked at the couple of projects that I did along Marbledale.
Right.
The brewery, we did a six-foot-high chain link, black chain link fence. I believe it was 68. Marbledale also down towards the storage building. That was also a black chain link fence. And I'm trying to remember what I did at the hockey rink, which we also in the rear, I think we had some chain link fence as well that was black. If the board would like, I mean, I could talk to the owner. We could change that to aluminum picket if that's what the board desires.
Yeah, I think it'd be a little more attractive than just a typical chain link fence. And the idea of Marbledale, you know, if you look at the master plan, was to try to kind of develop that from an industrial to more of a business area. And if you look at some of it, for example, your neighbor, his project, he's got some beautiful fencing. You know, it's going to have a nice building on there. So I think it would complement the property, the properties, if maybe you guys investigated that potentially rather than just doing a chain link fence, do something a little more decorative.
Sure. I mean, if it's an aluminum picket fence that is, you know, what the board desires, I don't think that's a deal breaker. I think we can go along with that.
Yeah, if you could look at that, we would appreciate that.
Sure, not a problem. Was there fencing issue in the front of the property too as well that we were referring to, Antonio?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, Dave.
Not the fence on top of the retaining wall, if there was one.
There is going to be a fence on top of the retaining wall, and that's going to be a chain link fence. I was referring to the fence on the street side.
We're talking about the fence on the street side. Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, currently, I'm looking at the Google Earth right now, and I see that you currently have a black chain link fence, more residential-looking chain link fence. And I see what you did across the street at the Brookover Brewery. And I think it'd be more attractive once, you know, that's.
Sure, that's fine. I think.
Sorry, it's a silver chain link fence.
Right.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, yeah, it'd be more attractive, I think, you know. And I know, for example, across the street, you know, Rocco's, he's doing something in the back, which is going to be very nice. You know, that whole little area, I hope they become a catalyst for, you know, the future development of Marbledale. So whatever we can do to kind of make it look beautiful, I would appreciate.
Sure, that's fine. We're in agreement on that. That's fine.
Okay, great. Anything else, Dave?
If the board has any questions, I'm here to answer any questions that they might have.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions on this application on board?
None here.
And done. Thank you, David, for coming back with, since the session.
Thank you.
With this.
You know, the only thing is we're going to need some money upfront for the consultant to review the stormwater.
I was just going to ask that question. Are we going to send that to DOS Office to have this reviewed for drainage?
Yes.
So Dave, if you could do that quickly, that'd be awesome.
Sure. Bill, if you want, give me a shout tomorrow morning, or I'll give you a call. We'll set up whatever we need to do and, you know, make it happen.
Okay.
Anyone else on the board have any questions?
None here.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Don't move.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone here this evening to speak on this application? David, can you, can you stop sharing?
Sure.
Anyone here to speak on this application? Going once, going twice? Okay, so at this point, I make a motion to hold a public hearing open until the next month's meeting. Can I have a second, please? All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you, David. I appreciate all your help and your cooperation.
Not a problem. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
At this point, I'd like to call up 225 White Plains Roads. I see Mr. Capata is here.
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Chairmembers of the Board. Lewis Campata, Architect, on behalf of the applicant, Rowley 111 LLC. 225 White Plains Road is situated on the southwest corner of Winter Hill and 22 White Plains Road, and was formerly formerly owned by Concordia College and used as dormitories for students. This property is also, I'm just sharing my screen, is also part of the original 1891 subdivision of Gifford-Fulham, and its lot area is currently 21,997 square feet. And we are proposing to subdivide this into two building lots as of right, based on the current zoning law for the A5 zone. Now, for the A5 zone, as the zoning law stipulates, any lot created after July 1st, 1999 must be 10,000 square feet in lot area. So as you can see here, this is our subdivision plan. This is the existing survey. Lot 1, what we're calling Lot 1, has a lot area of 11,929 square feet, which fronts Gifford and White Plains Road. Lot 2 is 10,066.9 square feet and fronts Henry Street and Winter Hill. One of the benefits of this, of this project is relieving the existing intersection of the two curb, two curb cuts, which are located here and here directly on Winter Hill. You can see that here in the survey as well. The intent and idea here is to have a curb cut located on Gifford Street for Lot 1, and a curb cut, which will be located on Henry Street for Lot 2. Lot 1, we, the intent here is we would consider this to be 1 Gifford Street. The address number one is currently, currently does not exist, so we would be creating 1 Gifford. And then for Lot 2, we are going to consider this to be either 1 Henry Street or 66 Winter Hill Road. This, this application is fairly simple, straightforward as of right. So at this time, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, a couple of questions. On the, you show a driveway, how you're approaching the house on Gifford. How are you going to do that on Henry?
So the plan would be to have a curb cut, which would be located right along the side property line, away from the corner.
Right. Can you reflect that on revised drawings for next? All right. The second question I have is, based on your lot size, what size houses can you place on the property?
So it's part of the zoning analysis, which can be found here at the bottom of the page. On Lot 1, Lot 1 can hold a house with a maximum FAR of 5,964 square feet, which is substantial for this area. And Lot 2 would hold a house of 5,033 square feet, with lot coverages of 4,077.1 on Lot 1 and 4,026 on Lot 2.
Do you have a sense? I mean, are you going to be using the total FAR for these applications?
No, no, no. So the homes, the homes here are sized to be around 3,000 square feet, consistent with the TLI neighborhood.
All right. You would have some large trees on the property, and specifically, very close to Lot 2, you have that beautiful big tree there. There was some concern from the community regarding that tree. I'm assuming they're taking that down, correct?
Where that tree is located is within the building, the buildable envelope for the structure, which you can see here. We have the setbacks, which are projected onto the site plant here and also here. So that, that tree is located within this building, building envelope.
Does anyone from the board have any other questions for the applicant?
None here.
No, I don't. Anyone else on the board?
So there's, there's no way to build a home without removing the tree, in other words?
That would be correct, yes. It's, yeah, it's centrally located on the site.
Have you given any thoughts yet to when you developed these properties, like replacing, placing some trees on the property that, you know, can potentially, you know, let's say, replace that existing one because it's probably a 100-year-old tree?
Right.
But plant something that, or plant multiple trees that, you know, can enhance the property or?
Yes, yes, definitely. So because these, this property is quite a unique, unique condition, where it fronts four streets. So you could imagine that what we will be doing is creating, screening along those property lines to a point where there's still transparence, transparency from the street to the home. But then behind that sort of screening, we want to create a second layer of more, I guess, trees that mature larger, similar to the tree that's there now, maybe maples, dogwoods, something to really enhance the streetscape along all of these street fronts.
Okay. Any other questions, anyone on the board? Okay, so at this point, I make a motion to open a public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Don't move.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is it, can you lower your screen so I could see everyone on Zoom?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Does anyone here from the public person speak on this application? Jeff Sheldon, I have a note here from Jeff Sheldon who wants to speak on this application. Jeff?
Yes, good evening and thank you. I would like to comment on the proposed subdivision at 225 White Plains Road.
Can you identify, identify yourself and where do you live?
I certainly can. My name is Jeff Sheldon. I'm a property owner at the Tower Club down on Columbus Avenue. I've been a resident of Tuckahoe since 2015. I do have a couple of concerns that I would like to raise apropos to this application. But, you know, before I do that, I do just want to quickly congratulate the village on, on two things. Number one, you know, the recent passage of the preservation law, which is designed to safeguard historic sites in Tuckahoe. You know, as someone who's interested in preserving the history of this village, which is a great little village, I really believe that this is a terrific and visionary law, and I look forward to its application. The other thing actually predates me, but, you know, the fact that we as a village are an Arbor Day Foundation Tree City. I remember hearing that when I first moved here in 2016, and actually being very impressed at the desire to preserve, you know, the trees, the green life that exists within the confines of this village, which then gets me to my two concerns about this proposal and the plans to develop 225 White Plains Road. Number one, I don't think the history of this site is being taken into consideration in the plans to demolish the existing building and replace it with, you know, potentially two infill properties. I've actually been very interested, been interested in the history of this building since I first heard about it on PBS, you know, and like it or not, I think there are some people who, you know, would like to, you know, forget about the historic significance of this building. But it was home to, you know, Dutch Schultz, you know, who was, you know, considered a notorious gangster. It was, you know, being termed the Dutch Schultz Mansion. There were rumors that, you know, his gold is stashed somewhere around there. But certainly, there is historical significance there. You know, the actual site itself, which, you know, sits on the corner of, you know, White Plains Road and Winter Hill, has Revolutionary War significance also, you know, as seen by Gifford Park. I'm not sure if the village has truly studied the historical significance of this particular location. I think they need to, I think there is a lot of history here that is worth preserving between Dutch Schultz and the Revolutionary War. Number two, and more importantly, and this was just brought up about this tree, but, you know, there is this beautiful tree that sits in the center of the backyard there. You know, every day I drive by this property and actually marvel at this tree. It is a landmark. It sits up there. It's beautiful. It's irreplaceable. That tree is probably 200, perhaps 300 years old. I think it'd be worthy of knowing how old that tree is. It could date back to when Ward House was Marble Hall, when it was a key stop on the Carriage Trail North. It might even date back even further, you know, who knows? It may have even been around during the Revolutionary period. I think this needs to be studied and taken into consideration before anything rash is done, like the removal of what could be a very significant tree on a very significant property. You know, I think, thinking about this, when I saw the plans, you know, I think, you know, probably, you know, worst nightmares come true. But, you know, I couldn't see a way in which this property could be split without, you know, harming the tree. Obviously, the plan is to take it down. As I said, it's irreplaceable. So with that, I really would implore the Planning Board not to make any hasty decisions on the subdivision, not to rush lightly into the subdivision. It is a historically significant, potentially historically significant property. So before any decisions are made, I would ask the Planning Board to consider two key things. Number one, that our village history committee be engaged to actually explore the historical significance of this building and of the site that it sits on, most importantly, and that we as a tree city do absolutely everything we can to ensure that this beautiful tree, this landmark tree is protected. Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Mr. Wornos for next?
I have a comment. The historic site is across the street.
Right.
It's a board house, which has nothing to do with this. Thank you.
Kevin, go ahead. Kevin?
Sorry, the mute button is not how I close my screen. Of course, I don't use Zoom every day. I use WebEx.
Of course, Cisco.
Of course I do. Hey, guys, Antonio Board, Bill. I want to start off thanking all of you guys for all the time and effort in making your community better. I guess my questions really revolve, I wrote down a couple of notes here today, right? I get it, like, the property was sold. Somebody wants to develop it and improve our neighborhood. I guess I got a couple of comments for the architect. One, you need to call out the Samuel, the Captain Samuel's Island that's offside of that. Bill, we've been through a lot. I don't understand how you're going to build a house on that lot with the traffic, but I guess I have three concerns. Traffic, safety, and the character of Gifford Park in the Village of Tuckahoe that I'm asked the board to address, right? At the end of the day, that building, I know the one across the street had more visibility, at least in the neighborhood the last couple of weeks, but the building at 225 White Plains Road is the entrance to Gifford Park and the Village of Tuckahoe from the east. Everybody that comes into this village sees not only the monument, that center island that's in the middle of White Plains Road and 22 there, but also that, but also that building, right? I don't, just from what I briefly saw here today, and I looked at it earlier in the week, I don't see how you're going to build an entrance on that second lot, and I forget the architect's name. But I think there needs to be some detail. And Antonio, you asked for that. I was going to ask for that as well. I guess my biggest concern that I think we all need to address is, is we don't want to become a used car lot and look like East Chester across from Lake Isle, right? And having that visual plan, I think, needs to come across, right? The, the house on McKinley was renovated a couple of years ago and looks beautiful. Has that been considered as an option here to renovate the existing structure? And if it's off the plate, I get that. But I think that's something that, as neighbors, that we need to understand, right? Additionally, multiple lots don't fit the multiple lots don't fit the character of the neighborhood, right? And I get this lot is bigger than the other two. But we already deal with traffic problems, right? Like, we've had accidents on Henry Street, which is a half a which is a half a block long. We've had two rollover cars in the last few years because of speeding. And like adding additional houses and lots to address that, I think is something that should be addressed in the future. And it's not only about the vehicle traffic, but it's the safety of the pedestrians, right? Traffic is bad now, rezoning for multiple lots and creating smaller lots to build these gigantic homes. How's that going to fit into the character of not only the village, but of this neighborhood too, which everybody's addressed as being older? And I'll just wrap up with, and I don't remember exactly, but I listened to some of these, some of you guys recognize me, don't recognize me. At the beginning of the pandemic, I think there was a similar lot down in front of ICS that was turned down for zoning due to traffic impact, right? And I would like to understand how we're going to address that issue. You know, it just, these tiny homes, these tiny lots having traffic pour out into this was probably the busiest intersection in Takahoe outside of down by the train station. Needs to be considered and thought of and discussed as we move forward here.
Kevin, Kevin, just one thing, the lot they're proposing are much larger than in our community. So they're not small lots, like, you know, they're over 10,000 square feet where the average lot in our community here is approximately 5,000, 5,500. You know, so I just want you to be aware that these are large lots. And I get your concerns, I just, that's the only statement I want to make.
Antonio, I get that, right? I recognize both lots are bigger than the one that I have my house on, right? But everybody in our community has renovated their houses, right? There hasn't been a tear down. And I think that's what's got, I mean, to, I don't know if the actual developer's on or if it's just his architect. That's concerning, right? Like, you have a beautiful old home across the street or next door. We all have 90, 100 plus year old homes in the neighborhood. And to hear that somebody wants to rip down a house, there needs to be some visual, right? Bill, we've known each other, you helped me renovate my house, I say as the the inspector in town. Just, you know, do what's right for the community, right? Because it is the entrance to the community. Knocking those massive trees down, I get that's subjective and attorneys aren't going to care about trees. But how are you going to do traffic on that second lot coming out onto Henry Street right now and Winter Hill Road? Give anybody a way to get in there, out of their driveway, because right now, that lot, maybe it has room. Is there room for a driveway to even come over to Henry Street? Because like, how do they get in and out of their house?
Yeah, that's the reason why I asked for, you know, to see the driveway and, you know, how the house will be situated. So he, I'm sure the architect, Mr. Cantano, will provide that at the next meeting. We also have workshops, by the way. You're welcome to join the workshops, any one of you.
So one of my asks today, was I was going to do it in writing to you guys, is we have to proactively go on the website. Is there a way, like, I know some of the stuff in the community right now is like, we got an email blast. And I'll help out, I'll volunteer, I'll talk to you or somebody else after line, but how do we start sharing some of this information more proactively to those that want to see it and read it, right? Because we do have to dig for it on the on the on the website. I'm actually telling you, I'm going to volunteer and try to help a little bit, so.
Yeah, no, I get it. I'm not sure what else, Gary, I'm not sure what else can be done with the website to make it a little more simpler. There, I know there's an email blast that goes out monthly by Jackie. Can that, you know, at least put the Zoom links in there or something like that? Just make it easier for people to get access. If you haven't signed up to the villages email, I mean, they send an email, I think, every month, and it kind of gives you what's going on specifically with the village board meeting. So if you could look into that, Gary, I mean, I think it would be
Yeah, I'll also see if there's a way we can put a link up to the to the documents that they're that they're submitting. So the village can see that easier without having to boil anything or, you know, but yes, we're looking at up there. I'll talk to the village administrator and see if we can get that.
Antonio, Gary, Bill, like, I get it, development needs to happen. We don't want that building falling into disrepair either. But how do we do it and maintain the character of the neighborhood and the village? You guys have been really good about that. You also, we just want to, you know, make sure traffic and safety is addressed. We got enough issues on on these neighborhood streets with people cutting through and accidents and speeding and Chief is dealing with it. I mean, we all been, we've all locally been in these meetings where, you know, the police just kind of throw up their hands. We can't be everywhere at the same time. And adding another cumbersome way to get around that corner just doesn't make sense, right? But I'm open to suggestions if we we move forward, right?
Kevin, just for the record, your address, please?
12 Henry Street.
Okay, I see. Next one is John Wilson. Thank you. First of all, Kevin, John, please identify yourself and your address, please. John, you're still muted.
So I'm mute here.
There you go, you're good.
Okay. I tell you, 14 Henry Street, John Wilson. I don't want to belabor the points already made, but, you know, I support what Jeff and Kevin have said. I've wondered from the beginning, you know, when one does a development, does one have to tear down a building and replace it with multiple buildings versus take the building that's there, the bones and sort of redevelop that, you know, is that not a possibility? I don't know, I'm not a developer, number one. Number two, you know, the whole character of Gifford Park does center around that that area with the Ward House and then the the Kepchen Hall, Dutch Schultz House and the trees, you know, and it's my concern is that 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 whole element of the character of Gifford Park now is under threat. I don't know what the answer is. But I certainly would hope that any development done there will fit with the surrounding area. In particular, when it relates to the trees, I mean, there's a lot of old trees, there are a lot of tall old trees. They really make a big statement about this little area that we have. And obviously about the history of it. Not to mention the environmental benefits of this kind of, of these trees and this foliage. So again, I don't want to belabor whatever anyone else is saying, but I think we're all on the same page. And having youngsters living here as well, as all of us have in this little area, you know, traffic safety is a big, a big issue. We've seen a number of issues with those streets being used as as a cut arounds from Winter Hill and from White Plains Road. And, you know, the traffic issue is a concern, definitely. So safety is a concern as well. But, you know, I do, I don't know what can be done regarding the number of units on the lot, but that's something for someone with a higher pay grade than I have to determine, but I do think the environment, the trees, the tone and the character of the neighborhood needs to somehow be maintained in light of any development. And so, you know, that's all I would say, but you know, the focus has been on the Ward House for obvious reasons historically. But I just think this house is just as important. And again, is there a way to maintain this house, the bones of this house, the looks of this house? And you can sell it for double, I'm sure, if it was fixed up. But not my decision, but I just think, you know, ripping houses down right, left and center with trees and basically leveling the whole area, I don't know, you know, are there other options to that? But I will say my piece and then thank you, everyone, and thanks for everyone's work and focus on trying to make the best of this.
Thank you, John. Next one is Tanya Simone. Hi, Tanya, I'll mute yourself.
Actually.
There you go.
Better? Okay.
If you can just identify yourself and tell me where you live.
My name is Tonya Simon, and I live at 50 Columbus Avenue in Takahoe. And I just, I'm in agreement with John and Kevin and Jeff. I believe the property is a valuable part of Takahoe's history, famous and perhaps infamous in some ways. But it's as important as a landmark as Ward House and Gifford Park itself for anyone passing this historic crossroads of Takahoe. And it really is a beautiful property. It's stately, it's serene, it's one of the few breaks of green that we still have in our rapidly developing village. And I think trying to stuff more houses onto that is going to, you know, rid Takahoe of more of its valuable history and charm, not to mention make the traffic in there worse. I drive by there every day with my kids. And, you know, I feel like if we want more housing, there's a really large plot of valuable real estate right behind me on Lime Kilman Wallace Street that's crying out for development. And if we want more new build, it would be more practical to put it close to the developing businesses on Marble Dale. So I'm, you know, echoing these other people and asking you, the planning board, to please consider maintaining the integrity of 225 White Plains Road Yard and all. It's a beautiful house, it's a beautiful plot of land, and it's one of the most visible and historic intersections in our village. Please continue to let it be an important landmark in historic Gifford Park Triangle. And please let it become the historic crossroads of Takahoe where we decide to preserve the valuable history that we still have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Danato Vakaro, next. Identify yourself and your dress.
Sure. My name is Danato Vakaro. I live at 40 Deerfield Avenue and it's in Bronxville Manor, it's the actual unincorporated area of Eastchester. I'm very interested in what I basically share the same sentiment that was started by Jeff Sheldon, also reinforced by Kevin, John, Antonia, and my family came to Takahoe more than 100 years ago, my mom's side, my dad's side came more than 100 years ago to the Eastchester North End. So I just have a firm sort of passion about the history of our wider town, including the villages of Takahoe, Bronxville, which I've been a part of my whole life. And so for me to hear that this really important part of the centerpiece of coming into Takahoe, it might be broken up is really disturbing. So I don't want to take too much time, except to say that I really, I fully agree with what Jeff Sheldon had outlined in the beginning, what others have said. But I want to just add one more thing. I'm actually a a big walker. I walk all around, I walk miles a day through Eastchester, Takahoe, Bronxville, through Yonkers back, and that area is especially not safe for pedestrians, that specific intersection. Again, I just, I walk every part of the town of Eastchester, Takahoe and Bronxville, and that area needs, whatever happens, we need to be very mindful of pedestrians there. Someone already mentioned their car mishaps, but I'm not sure that it's on record, but it's, I can tell you as a walker that it's not safe to cross across Winter Hill Road, for one thing. And so certainly not across Post Road there. So it just wanted to be, I want to add that and just say I fully agree with most of what's been said about preserving the character of our village. Thank you.
I agree with you. I'm a walker as well, not as much as you do, but crossing from the church and that particular property is just challenging. I mean, it's, and you can see in the central island, there's a walking path there because, you know, people, there's no good way to cross. I agree with that. Okay, Ali, next, please.
Hi, Ali Kutsas, 11 Henry Street. I know that there is, and first of all, I echo what everybody before me has said. I know there's a lot of concerns, you know, these are cut through streets. People are constantly trying to avoid the lights at Winter Hill and Route 22, and they're constantly cutting down Henry and Gifford, zooming down Fulling, ignoring the stop signs. I know, so I know that that's been, so I will echo that sentiment. I also echo the environmental sentiments as well. My concern too is there's already a bus stop there, and maybe this has been addressed, and so forgive me if I missed that part of it, but I also am wondering what will happen to that bus stop, what happens to the traffic there? And so I would like those questions, you know, addressed as well, because I do think that that is another concern.
Mr. Cantana, can you elaborate on that? You're muted, you're muted.
So in terms of the bus stop, there, there hasn't been any plans. The bus stop is located on on village property currently, which, which I believe is also on State Road, that's White Plains Road.
Right.
Right. But yeah, that is, so it's not necessarily on the property. However, I could speak with developer to see if something that could, could if we could do something to sort of beautify that, make it at least safer than what it is today, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, it's not so much about beautifying it too, by the way, it's just that, is that going to, how is that going to work with, you know, two driveways, one on Gifford, one on Henry, and then you have this bus stop still on that little tiny corner property? So I don't understand how people who are going to buy that home.
So, so the bus stop is located between the existing two curb cuts, which will be removing, these, these two curb cuts will be removed. So therefore, there's less traffic in terms of local traffic with cars moving in and out of this driveway. The curb cut here specifically closer to the, to the bus stop would be around the corner on Henry Street.
Right, but people are not using that driveway now. So I understand that the curb cuts will be on the opposite streets. Again, I guess I'm just concerned about how the transportation will be affected, so.
Yeah, I don't think the bus stop will be affected in any way, but but to your point, if you could make that a little safer, a little more, you know, a little more attractive, we would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
You have two hands raised. One is from Mr. Edward P. and the other one, Mr. Mike Brown.
Okay. If you guys could just sign up in the chat, it'd be easier for me to call in sequence. So who are the first one, Carolina?
Dr. Edward.
Oh, Edward, okay, hi, I see you raised, okay. But if everyone else could just, in the chat, just type in your name and you'd like to speak, so I could just call everyone in sequence? Okay, yes, Mr. Edward, I'm sorry.
Okay, my name is Dr. Edward Powers, M.D. I live at 6 McKinley Street, Bronxville and Takahoe. I speak against the subdivision and I speak against the teardown. I purchased the house in 2003 from Elizabeth Betts, B-E-T-T-S. And if you go to the book on the history of Bronxville and Gifford Park, she wrote that section. And what's significant is I think Gifford Park is significant not only locally, but in the history of this country. I have a, my house was completed in 1898. And my guess is that that street was not named McKinley Street until after 1901, when he was, you know, shot in Buffalo and Roosevelt took over as president. But in the history, in that book, when they were putting in a garden, which I still have next to my house, part of my property, in the 30s, when they were digging on that property, they dug up a cannonball. And the kids in the neighborhood, I said, we know what war that's from. That's from the Korean War. Well, obviously not. It was a British cannonball. So if you think of the history of that area, the British occupied that area on 22 all the way up to White Plains where they had the Battle of White Plains. And it's been pointed out that there was a skirmish at the top of that hill. I think that the house that we're talking about is part of a historic neighborhood of Gifford Park, and it brings the character and it brings out the beauty of Takahoe. And so I speak against the subdivision and I speak against the teardown. And just one thing is I have a tree in my driveway and the arborist came and he said that tree was in existence before Benjamin Franklin was alive. So we're talking about a tree that dates back to the 1700s. And my guess is that the tree on that property that's under discussion is at least 300 years old. Okay, and I think it would to tear that down and to destroy the nature and character of that intersection would be a travesty and an injustice to the people of Takahoe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown, next to speak?
Mr. Brown? Hi, guys. Yes, yes. Hi, Tony, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, guys. Yes, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I in agreement with everyone, especially the people that will be affected the most that live in that area on on Gifford and on Henry Street as well. And if this does go through, I just want to bring it up to the board itself that To the board itself that there are no storm drains on Henry Street at all, and I understand. Um, you know, a large piece of property that they're looking to develop. Um, you know, and I know they have to control the water to a certain extent, but. Uh, when you start adding all these, uh, that the hardscapes, and I know when there was other construction that went on. In that area that uh, people were affected with water flow and everything. So. Uh, I just want to bring that to the town's attention and especially if a driveway is going to spill out onto Henry Street, which is gonna. Add uh, much uh, stor- storm water, uh, if it's not, if it's all not collected, which it's all not going to be collected. That it could impact the people in that area as well. And uh, we definitely don't want that, that to happen because it has. Been happening. Uh, I know that I have had more water as time's been going on because of construction that has been. So if the town could. Help us out, maybe put a storm drain there somehow and redirect the water down with the hill. If this does go through, I would like for them to look at that if possible. Thank you.
Right, uh, just for the record, uh, Mike, your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. I live at four Henry Street, two ha- two, two lots away from the property that's looking to be developed.
Okay, I, I think the majority of uh, the drainage will be handled during the um, when they're proposing the homes and that will. We will look at that very closely.
No, I understand that. And listen, uh, I'm a realtor and I know they do have to control the water, but you're talking about. Taking a large green space and now adding a, you know, a house onto it, and then it's a hardscaping involved and. Uh, it's very difficult to control that water.
Yes, yes.
Hey, Antonio, just so that we don't misspeak, they're not here for site plan. Site plan is not required. They're one family homes.
Right.
So they're only here for the moving of the lawn.
I know.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
No, that may make things easier for them to understand.
Okay, thank you. Louise, um, Maniscalco, Maniscalco? Louise? Last chance, Louise? Oh, hi. Oh, you gotta unmute yourself. I see you, but I can't hear you.
Okay, how about now?
Perfect, I can hear you now.
Great, I'm sorry about that.
No worries. Uh, can you just identify yourself and give me your address?
Sure, Louise Maniscalco, and I'm at two sixteen White Plains Road.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I, I, I support all my neighbors and their concerns. I believe that um, the beauty of two twenty-five, um, just, it cannot be replaced. It is so special. I can talk about the traffic in ways that no one else can, because I have a child in a wheelchair. And no one stops for her. Um, so what's going to happen with new construction? Two new homes. I, I'm so concerned about that. Um, the bus stop. And then the, the traffic, what goes on here, the people that, that, the play the music and throw the garbage and. And, and don't stop for us. I mean, it sounds horrible, but this is what goes on on a daily basis. Um, and I'm, I'm very concerned about this, very concerned. But the beauty, the beauty and the history, that's uh, that's just a whole other. And, and Tuckahoe should support that. Tuckahoe should want that. To be part of their community. That's, that's all I could say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next one would be, uh, Edward Conway.
Hi, Ed Conway, eight Winslow Circle. Um, I just want to support my other uh, fellow residents and just. Make a quick comment about, you know, uh, wanting to see the, sort of the footprint of the home on Lot Two. It's an odd shaped. Uh, diagram and what that does to the character of the neighborhood. So be interested seeing that. Before any decisions are made on a subdivision and keeping that in character with that Gifford Park and the monument there. So very interested in seeing that before any decisions are made.
I, I, just for uh, your, uh, clarification, uh, what the architect was showing is just the setbacks from the property line.
Yes.
That doesn't necessarily mean that the house would be that shape, most likely.
No, I know. But one of, one of, yeah, one of, yeah. Yeah, but one of them had that footprint and the other one didn't. So how that would be situated, you know, would, to have the full picture would help.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, you got it. Um, AK twenty-two?
Yeah, hi, um, I'm Amanda. I live at ten Henry Street.
Okay.
Um, I have the same concerns that all of my neighbors here have. Um, I grew up my whole life in this house. My father grew up living in. Part of his life in this house. It was my great aunt's and that's who he got it from. So my house has been in my family since it's been built. So over a hundred years. And I used to play in that, that field when they used to let us play in that field, um, before Concordia started controlling it. So it is a bit nostalgic, but it also added to the character of the neighborhood. Um, so my real concern is. As what everybody else said, with kind of changing the character of the neighborhood, it's also, I know these lots are very large. But nobody's really talked about how large the houses that you're going to put on them are, because I've noticed lately with all we're developing is we put these giant houses. And we're losing green space. So it's, it's like a, a big house taking up the whole lot. Which I think then de- dejects from how the community looks too. So it's just a concern with, with the top of our block, again with the traffic and, and those. Elements too, but I just feel like we've lost so much green space in our communities over the years, that that was just always such a nice kind of. Thing to look at, as, as people said, as they walk by and it's kind of the entrance to Tuckahoe. It's just, um, I think it would be a travesty. Even cut those trees down. I mean, they're gorgeous. They were kind of in a perfect kind of allotment. At one point, there were three around the center and we used to play ball. Like in those fields and it was like perfect basis. So like, I just remember growing up with it and it would be, it would be difficult to see a change, I think.
Okay, well, thank you for your input. Um, anyone else? I don't see anyone else in the chat. Any else, any questions? All right, seeing that no one else has any questions, I'm going to keep the public hearing open for uh, another month. So if you have any questions or concerns, please come back. Can I have a, a second, please? I make a motion to keep the public hearing open for another month and second, please.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hey Lou, if you can get us uh, those documents in PDF, we'll try to get them on the website so people can see them.
Uh, I can't hear you, Lou.
Not a problem at all. I could do that.
Right, so if you could also update them to show where the driver is going to be and if you can kind of get a sense of what a footprint of a house could look like, we're not going to hold you to it, but just get a sense of what the.
Of course, we're working on the house right now, so.
Okay, great. All right, um, all right, great, thank you. See you next month. Uh, okay, next one. This two hundred White Plains Road. Soccer field. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Hi.
Hello.
Identify yourself and uh.
Prepped here, sorry, I was sitting in the other room listening. Okay, I am Chris Tremetola. I'm with Peter Gesoff, the Associate Architect, Landscapist Architects. Uh, I, I am representing Iona College, um, for the field project. At the former Concordia campus in Bronxville and Tuckahoe. Um, the site in question is the two hundred White Plains Road. I'm just sharing my screen here. Uh, everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, which is the athletic field, uh, that's currently there, um. Uh, on the Tuckahoe portion of the campus. Uh, the project is to replace the existing natural turf field. With an artificial synthetic turf field. Uh, this project, uh, may be familiar to some of the public and the, and the board. As this project went uh, to Tuck, through Tuckahoe in twenty eighteen. Uh, and construction, uh, it was approved in uh, late twenty eighteen and in early twenty nineteen. Uh, construction started. Uh, as many people know, Concordia ran into some issues and had to close. The project was. Halted, uh, very early on in the construction, um, essentially during mobilization, the project was, was halted. Uh, and the approvals have sunset. Now that um, Iona has taken over that campus, uh, they're looking to reignite this project and do the synthetic turf field. Um, there have been some minor changes to the project, all reductions, um. In, in the scope, the former building that was on the site, uh, has been taken off, uh, as long as, as well as the bleachers. This makes it a very low profile project that just replaces the existing natural grass with a synthetic turf. Uh, as for anybody who has been playing on the site, uh, or has seen a game on the site. Um, weather is a, is a very big issue for this site as the. Topsoil there has been compacted to a point where uh, any rain event within three days of um, a game. Would create a mud pit for this site, um, and make it essentially unplayable. So this is essentially to make this, again, once again, a playable field. Uh, so I'm just going to run through um, this slideshow here and show the documents. Um, if anybody has from the board has any questions, please feel free to interrupt or I'll take questions afterwards if, if there aren't. Uh, this is just a, a small rendering of the, of the site and field, uh, looking down Rose Avenue, uh, from the corner at Rose Avenue and White Plains Road. Uh, here's the survey of the site. Um, as you can see, it's a, currently a soccer field, um, full NCAA regulation size. We're not looking to increase the size of the field, it's the same size field, um, that's there currently. Uh, this is the rendering of the site. Uh, as you can see, if you can see my cursor. Um, this is the perimeter where there would be a flush curb here, which the artificial turf would be nailed to. Um, there's two small retaining walls here that are both about four feet tall, uh, at the northeast corner. To correct the grading issue, uh, that exists on the site. Um, the field itself would be a synthetic turf, as I mentioned, with a permanent lineage just in the turf. Uh, so there would be a lack of maintenance there, lack of mowing, uh, for people concerned about sound. Uh, there would be. Far less noise for maintenance, uh, on a regular basis. Um, surrounding the field would be a short chain link fence and a retractable netting. Uh, that is very transparent, very see-through, um, that's often seen on athletic fields now, uh, on each end. To prevent any um, athletic balls during play from going off the field and into neighbor's yard. Those would only be on the ends. Uh, as part of the project previously, uh, it was actually quite a long process to go through with, with um. Working with the town and, and the neighbors on the last round, uh, we added. Um, wood fencing along the north and east portions. And considerable vegetation, actually quite a lush planting plan along the north and east plant, uh, borders of the site. Um, to create increased amounts of privacy and visual beauty. Um, the only access here to the site, uh, from Rose Avenue is down here where we create two ADA parking spaces. Uh, and a ramp to get up onto the site. There is an additional entrance, pedestrian entrance only, um. From White Plains Road where there's an existing gate and would be an existing stair to get down. That would be the pedestrian access from the rest of. Concordia College, the west, the rest of the western half of Concordia College. Uh, here's the plans that were submitted. I'm just going to run through the, the landscape plans and following my uh, slides here, we'll go into the drainage plan. Uh, so here you can see it's essentially a vacant site. The remove, the removals that are here are simply some leftover utilities and some. Bleachers that are in such disrepair. They're, they're movable bleachers, but they're such disrepair that they just need to be carted off. I actually think. Those may have been carted off in the mobilization of the previous project, but I have to check with the, with the site that they were simply doing. Uh, here we see a blow up of the path that comes down from White Plains Road, uh, and the very small. Uh, injunction here that we're making to make these two ADA access parking spaces. Uh, in, in line with the crosswalk from across the tennis center. Uh, as you can see, we ramp up, uh, with railings here and here, uh, to get access to the field. Uh, the grading essentially is, it's a flat site right now with very minor pits. You can see the crown of the field as it's existing. Uh, here in a somewhat haphazard manner as it's existing, we're simply organizing those contours to be. Uh, a generally flat site, uh, as standard, as a synthetic turf. It's about a one percent crown on that site.
Hey, Chris?
Yes.
There's a line going through the parking spaces and around the handicap and I can't see what those are. You tell us what that line is going through the center of the parking spaces?
The line goes through the center of which parking space?
Yeah, I think it's referring to those, that line, that large dotted line that you have going.
This is the project limit line. So this is where the, the um, that's the PLL, as you can see there on the site. The project limit line simply states, you know, where the project is encompassing. Um, we put that around the site just to delineate that there's nothing outside of that zone.
With the exception of the stripe, uh, stripe parking, correct?
The stripe parking does, it, it bumps out here for that striped parking here.
That's the new stripe parking, right?
That's the new stripe parking here, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, so for the planting plan here, uh, this is essentially the. It is the same planting as we proposed last time. Uh, nothing, none of the, what was that?
Is it okay?
Okay, uh, none of the uh, concessions that were made or, or um. Additional work that we um, included in the project, uh, as part of the discussions on the previous round were reduced. All of those are, are kept the same. The only change to the planting plan is the site here that was a building is now also landscaped, as that building has been removed. Uh, here, just to give a visual, um, the paths on the site are a brushed concrete, brushed to the edge. Uh, with a saw cut, uh, control joint. Uh, the two small, uh, the two short retaining walls are a. Uh, segmental concrete block which fit in, uh, with the landscape in a, in a warm tone, as you can see. And the other uh, material for the hardscapes are, is the uh, natural, the synthetic turf, sorry. Uh, as you can see here. The various trees here, um, we actually, uh, the Peter Gesoff, the Associates, um, some of the public may know. Um, we worked with, uh, the Bronxville Historic Society to, to write a book of the natural landscape of Bronxville. Um, including recommended trees and shrubs and in, and caution, uh, for invasive species. So these selected trees and shrubs that we did for this project are all based off of that list, which are historically native plant material. Um, that includes that buffer landscape area on the north and east side. Uh, so this is just some of those, uh, species, uh, and these are the shrubs as well that we are including. Uh, if there's any questions about those species or the details about those species, I'm happy to, to ask. I just won't bore everyone with every detail of, of, of these plants. Uh, for the fencing, uh, we did a more of a residential feel on the north and east. Side of, of the property, uh, with a board on board, uh, fencing of six feet tall. Um, on the. Uh, Rose Avenue border of the property, we did a more institutional feel of a decorative steel fencing. Uh, that, that fits in with a college landscape. Um, and then for on the border of the fe- field, you can see what we typically use, which is a. Uh, chain link fence. Uh, this is showing as a six foot chain link fence. This is a field in Hastings that we did. Um, uh, the fence at the field here, uh, that we're talking about would be a four foot fence, so shorter than that. Uh, but would have the safety netting, um, at each end, uh, which as you can see here is very transparent. You can hardly see that it's actually up. Other than the, seeing the support line. Uh, so here you can see the example of the netting raised there at the end, uh, with the, with the rendering. Uh, the earlier rendering had been, had been netting lower. Uh, and as you can see here, this is just the entrance from that, um, the crosswalk and ADA parking. It's a very, uh, neighborhood feel for the. For the, uh, field, um, nothing like a stadium. This is simply a practice field, uh, for the college. Nothing like a stadium. This is simply a practice field for the college. And fits in with the residential feel of the of the neighborhood. This is an example here, just to to rehash, so everybody can understand what what was submitted versus what is being submitted. This is the field here. The previous rendering is this here, which included bleachers, a press box, a bathroom and locker room building and a small shed for maintenance machinery.
So in this particular time, you also had speakers on the opposite side of the field pointing homes to the, are those still in as part of this project? Are you both proposing that or is that?
Those are still be, the the conduit is still being run for those. So the option is there. That would be purchased, the wire would be run by the college if if they they find a need for that.
Okay, but the speakers, if they were ever installed, they'd always be facing away from homes and towards the baseball field, correct?
Correct, correct. So to to reiterate that conversation from the previous round during the proposal, the press box is here. Right now, when the practice happens on the field, normally the coach just brings a portable speaker and sets it somewhere on the field. And blasts whatever they're they're playing in whatever direction that he happens to place the the speaker. With this project, we would place the speakers on the north side and face those speakers to the south. So that there would be a very minimal amount of sound, if any, going north. From those to those points. So that would keep, that would remain as part of this project.
Right. I I think we should also cap the decimal level of the speakers so that we don't interfere with that would keep peace with the neighbors.
Yep. So moving forward, just to, I just want to reiterate what was discussed during this approval process. I I brought through the planning board resolution and decision from the last round. The first three points from the resolution were simply stating that everything submit proved that there was no significant adverse impact to the environment and that all the secret documents were as per regulation. Those were, you know, the the paperwork side of the submission. The second or the the fourth point here being adequate and convenient vehicular and pedestrian traffic. As part of this point, we had submit a circulation plan. As well as being reviewed by a third party planning company. And a letter was issued by the college stating the conditions of how the parking on Rose Avenue is handled. And where not only the teams, but the the spectators would be parking during an event. That's the, that plan is here. Which we're resubmitting, which shows all the teams and spectators would be parking in the Meyer Athletic Lot, walking through the Meyer Athletic Center and across to the field. The twenty-two spaces would be preserved for officials, Umps, coaches and medical personnel only. Any bus drop off for this field for teams would drop off here and then proceed to the Meyer Athletic Lot. They would not be able to hang hang around on Rose Avenue. And that would, all of these measures would be insured by two parking attendants paid for by the college to be on site during any event. One would be here up at the corner and one would be right at at the site. This is that letter, which Iona College will be resubmitting to keep all of these same points. Here you can see the two traffic attendants will patrol Rose Avenue to keep vehicles from parking on surrounding streets and off the ground. They will direct traffic to the parking lot at the M.A.T., which is the Meyer Athletic Center and Steinfall respectively. A new crosswalk from the entrance exit of tennis center across Rose Avenue, which we just mentioned, would also be part of that project. And as I mentioned, the twenty-two spaces along Rose Avenue would be priority for medical personnel, coaches, referees and other officials. Signage would be placed during any events to make sure that everybody understands where they're supposed to be going. And a bicycle rack would is already located at the tennis center, which could be used for anybody who would be riding their bicycle there. The college, when it was Concordia, did have a considerable pedestrian link there to the Tuckahoe Train Station and the Bron, the Bronxville Train Station, although Bronxville Train Station had quite the uphill battle to get there. The fifth point from the previous submission was protection of environmental quality and the preservation enhancement. The board had found that with the additional fencing and landscaping, the board believed that the project will enhance the neighborhood area. All the improvements will adequately shield the neighboring properties, allowing more privacy to the neighborhood than they already enjoy. Just wanted to point that out that, you know, this was a a long process that we we were very advantageous to work with the the neighbors and the community to make this as beneficial of a project as possible for all parties involved. And again, here's the fencing, just to to remind everybody what we were working with. And the plan, the wood fencing rides along the north and east sides of the property. The decorative steel fencing is along Rose Avenue from here to here. As there is a an existing boulder wall, freestanding boulder wall that is along White Plains Road that will remain. The chain link fencing and sports setting would only be around the exact perimeter of the field. Again, the last point was the quality of the building overall site design will enhance and protect the character, property values of the adjacent neighborhood. This was agreed upon by all parties involved by the end of the design process. And Concordia has greatly improved the proposed project after comments from the public, this board and the consultants of this board. So we have incorporated all of those comments from the previous round. We are not trying to to take away any of those benefits that we had previously included. Here is a picture, just to refresh everyone's mind of the existing site here. And just as an example, not to say that it's the same site, but this is a site that we did in Tarrytown. Where you can see, I think the site that we're talking about here at 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 two hundred White Plains Road will look even nicer than this. But just to give a sense of of what a lush planting around a field. And the synthetic turf can do to kind of boost the aesthetic value of a site. Obviously, the stormwater basin here would not be in our site, but just to give a visual example. And the last items here were just a a a confirmation of all the pieces that were submitted over time. That the traffic plan submitted would be adhered to, that no exterior lighting on the site would be, or other than security lighting. Would be approved by the building department, which we agreed to. The circulation plan during event dates would be adhered to and buses may not drop off. An escrow for the building department would be maintained for for the inspections and engineering reviews. And this is conditional upon the village engineer review of the SWIP. So just concluding with the renderings here to show again what we're looking to do. And I'm going to pass along to Chuck from Langen to explain the stormwater portion. As you can see here, just to prep for Chuck, this is the stormwater plan that the grading and drainage plan that's being proposed. And this is the previous plan that was submitted and approved. As you can see, the diagonal drains leading to the one main collector using the gravel underneath and going to the the drain drainage inlet here was previously submitted and is now being submitted as well. But I'll let Chuck take over from here.
Thank you, Chris. Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Charles Etchig with the firm of Langen Engineering. Our responsibility on this job was to design the grading drainage and erosion control for this project. And as Chris said, we 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 mirrored the design that was put forth in your prior approval. That was reviewed by your engineer and found to be acceptable. The the the, this site currently drains in a southeasterly direction towards Rose Avenue. And really, given as 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 dense as the soils are and as compacted they as they are. There's just really no control of stormwater runoff on this site. And with a certain amount of rain, I'm sure you see flow going down Rose Avenue. The proposed field will actually help that situation and improve it. Underneath the synthetic field, which is completely permeable. We put a layer of gravel and these perforated pipes, which are the dotted lines in the diagram. And that gravel layer, which is anywhere from twelve to eighteen inches thick, runs the entire length and width of the field. So rainfall events will soak through the field. They'll be stored in the gravel. And then at the end of the field, Chris, if you want to point out that outlet structure. We have a structure that basically meters out the flow from that gravel and carries it through a pipe system down to Rose Avenue. And then we're extending the drainage system in Rose Avenue with a twelve inch pipe in the street to connect to the series of infrastructures that is at the corner of Rose and Everett Street. So so current site, no stormwater controls, straight runoff into the street. Proposed design, control of the series of storm events from one to a hundred year. Which is compliant with the villages drainage codes and will comply with the New York State DEC stormwater regulations for construction sites greater than an acre. And we will meter our flow from our site so that the impact on the downstream system is reduced to less than the current condition. So net result, and we find this with these synthetic fields very often, is that we can actually improve drainage conditions.
I'm sorry, can you just explain what metering is for the public, please?
So so basically what we do is we put a throttle in this structure. There's a baffle. And the water gets retained in the gravel and slowly let out. It's kind of like if you partially relieve the drain in your sink. You can fill the sink up with water and then as you slowly release the drain, that water slowly goes out. That's what this throttle does. So at at the point at which we control our flow, we designed the 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 outlet pipe so that it meters the rate at which water leaves the site. And when you're looking at stormwater management systems and drainage pipes and you're trying to understand how a project might affect that piping system. You you want to be concerned about the rate of the that the water discharges from your site because the capacity of the pipes are based on rate of flow. And so what will happen here is we will control the rate of flow from our site so that the capacity of the downstream piping system is not impacted. In fact, we think here we're going to make an improvement. Not sure exactly what the drainage conditions are like at the corner of Everett and Rose, but I can tell you that this design with the amount of gravel and storage that we're providing will will have a minimal discharge rate from our site. So the the water will be controlled to a much greater extent than it currently is. Because this site has more than an acre of disturbance, we'll be required to prepare Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan in accordance with New York State DEC criteria. That plan will be submitted to your consulting engineer for his review and comments. It'll incorporate the grading, the stormwater management and our erosion control measures for this project. That's really the
Had that time been submitted to our consultant, though?
No, we expect to submit that plan this week.
Okay.
I'd be glad to answer any questions about the drainage proposed for this site.
Yeah, like we said at the workshop, and that's not my our forte. I know that this is a slightly different system than it was initially proposed. However, we we've we're having our consultant look at this as soon as you finalize this. We've also shared this with East Chester, I believe, where we're sharing this with East Chester so that they can also comment on this as well. I know that, you know, the there's always been some sort of a water issue down on Rose and I'm hoping that, I know East Chester is working on something, I believe. And so I think the the combination of having you work on this, the our consultant work on this and East Chester hopefully that kind of alleviates some of the issues that are potential that are occurring down on Rose.
Yeah, I mean, I truly believe that this improvement for this almost three acres of land that currently discharges uncontrolled onto Rose Avenue and into that system will will make that a better, it'll be better as a result of our design in the long run.
So let me ask you a question. When you actually excavate this site, because right now that site is, like you said, it's just, it's been run upon for fifty years. No one's done anything to actually do anything with the soil. So it's like playing on concrete realistically. So when you dig this out, twelve to eighteen inches, right? Is that the extent you're going down or is that, are you going down further than eighteen inches and then building it back up? What's the, how are you doing?
No, we're just, we'll just excavate down the eighteen inches. It's it's actually the edges of the field, it's about twelve inches. In the middle of the field, it's about eighteen inches. Because we're not, we're not, we haven't designed this system with the hopes that we'll get some infiltration into the ground because it is such a such compacted soil conditions. So so very often, these systems will will take into consideration the infiltration of the existing soils. And we think, Mr. Chairman, exactly for for what you said. You know, these soils are not going to infiltrate. You could, you could, you could run a perk test on this site and probably get no water movement. So so we've taken a different approach. We basically created an oversized bathtub in which to hold the water and slowly let it out of the site or out of the site. So we don't, we're not taking into account any infiltration, so we won't try and overexcavate and improve the soil conditions.
A question just popped up, wanting to know if there's any dry wells proposed for the site. Can you explain how the system works for the community, please?
So so it, the premise is is the same as dry wells or Coltechs. You know, if you've seen those applied to a site, basically what happens is stormwater runoff from the development is directed to those chambers. And those chambers can function in a variety of ways. Some of them can act like septic systems where some of the water infiltrates into the ground. Some of them, and in most cases, Coltech units really act as simply a holding tank that has an outlet mechanism to it. So what we do with these athletic fields, because we need to collect the water and and it requires this gravel structure, we take advantage of it. And so we use the gravel and the voids in the gravel as the place to hold the water. So this is really this, this is really a lens that has capacity to hold the runoff from the developed area for a long enough period of time that we can let it out slowly. Now you say to yourself, how does gravel do that? So so gravel by its nature has about forty percent voids. So so the voids in the gravel is what we account for where the water is going to be. So this is just like a dry well system or a Coltech system or an open detention basin. They're all designed exactly the same way. They're designed to hold water and to slowly let it out. We just happen to take advantage of the gravel that's required to build a synthetic field as the mechanism for storage. And I will tell you that I mean, we design these all over the country and this is, this is how the drainage system is done in almost all cases.
Given it, given the compactness of the soil, right? When you're digging this out, you're really creating a large bathtub and you're putting in these pipes and then you're putting in your gravel and then slowly it's going to sweep through your perforated pipes into your distribution tank there and then slowly get the released into the sewer system.
Exactly.
The other question I have is on the, I guess, the west side of the site, closer to Route twenty-two there. There seems to be like you're not doing anything there and that's also, I realize the majority of the compacted soil is also is really on a plain surface. However, you know, having been on this particular field with my son many years ago, you know, and then after a rainy land, the whole back section also gets pretty muddy. Has any consideration been taken to maybe extend the field a little bit north? I mean, west?
So so Chris, do you want to circle? So so Chris, do you want to circle the two inlets that we provided outside of the field? So that location there, Mr. Chairman, and that location there, those are drain inlets. And the intent is to allow water from those areas to enter into our drainage system at those two points. So the intent is to degrade that so that they'll drain to those catch basins and then get into our system.
So you're going to grade it so that slows towards those two.
That's correct.
Okay. And that would just be natural turf, right?
That's just going to be grass. Yep.
And since, I I guess you're going to put sod down or how are you going to have grass growth in this concrete down there?
Um, I I I think you're right. I think probably the only way to keep the grass growing is probably to put to put sod down. I mean, we may in that area have to airify the soils a little bit. So we may have to go through there, break those soils up a little bit. And at least get, you know, six to eight or twelve inches of material that's, you know, loosened up to to give the grass a chance to to grow.
Exactly. Otherwise, it's just going to be uh.
We're gonna have a muddy mess.
Exactly.
Yes.
Um, if I could ask, what's the duration you anticipate construction schedule for if if this was to go through? Given this uh, extensive drainage plan and and the side, what are we looking at uh, schedule wise excavation and?
Do you want to take that or you want?
I'll let you.
Just so.
Typical, typical construction for a field like this is anywhere between four to six months, depending on complications that are during construction. Um, it depends on a couple of factors, but considering there's no building left on on the site for the design. It's just the field, uh, it could actually be. Ahead of four months, but I wouldn't put my money on that. I I think we're in that four to six month window.
Okay.
And Chris, the the other thing we spoke about at the uh, the work session is, you know, during the construction process, you know, um, uh, we, Rose is a. Main roadway out of uh, that section of East Chester. So we want to make sure that we have some sort of plan in place. You know, for material storage, vehicular storage for people working there. Uh, so, you know, we want to be able to make sure that we don't clog up that artery. But if we could put a plan together, just so that we have an understanding how. You know, uh, we want to be good neighbors to our, uh, you know, to our community uh, in East Chester there. So we just want to make sure that, uh, you know, we don't have, you know, fifty cars parked outside, trucks.
Right.
You know, I believe that. I believe that on the last round, we put that into the um, general conditions of the spec book for the project during bidding. We had that all contractors had to be um, parking in the Meyer Athletic Center lot. Uh, and walk across, similar to what we were uh, planning for the circulation plan. Um, and that any um. Trucking of materials, if let's say gravel is being brought in or soil is being brought out, whatever is happening, you know, there there can be. A consistent flow of trucks during that day. Um, or a series of days that there are parking attendants there as well, just to make sure that traffic keeps moving. Uh, during those periods.
I I do, I do recall that, Chris, from our last time, uh, I know.
Yeah.
Intensively, I went through the logistics of this and I recall you.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll maintain that.
It's, it's, Chris, it's Mike from the building department. Just so you're aware, that Rose hub, probably seventy percent of the school, Tocco school buses go down that between seven and eight. And then two, two, two thirty to three thirty. So you need to be aware that all of the village, sixty percent of the school buses come down that road at that time period.
Yes, and al- along with those uh, parking attend, the attendance there and for any, any. Particularly busy construction periods. Uh, we had a window of time, two windows of time that were uh, no go for trucking. Uh, to make sure that that wasn't impeded.
Yeah, I'd just like to see this part of the resolution. So if we could put the plan together, in addition to that, we should also have uh, Tocco. Uh, police involved managing the traffic during, you know, the uh, when you anticipate for argument's sake, you know. Excavating, having trucks leaving the the site and then when you bring in gravel or some materials. Where you expect to have, you know, uh, a convoy, I must say, a convoy or trucks or. To make sure that, you know, we keep traffic flowing uh, as best as possible.
Okay, yeah, I can put that together.
Okay. Any else on the board have any questions on uh, on drainage here?
No, I think, uh, well, well, this is, this is not, uh, this will be continued, Antonio, correct with our engineers.
Yeah, no, we're not doing anything.
We're not going to be.
We have, we have to have our consultants look at this, we want to make sure we have all our ducks in order. Uh. My owner.
Yeah, we have a comment, our neighbors who live in there.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Questions, uh, we just make sure we're doing our due diligence, uh, with all their.
All right, so is is uh, anyone else on the board have any questions? Otherwise, I'll open up the public hearing. All right, so at this point, I make a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so hold on a second, uh, I'm going to try to, there was a list of people here. Hold on.
I know, Dr. Edward, uh.
Yes, Dr. Edward, I think you were first.
Yeah, he was first, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Let me lower my hand. My name is Dr. Edward Powers. I'm at Sixth McKinley Street, Bronxville, New York. Um, and I've been living at that address since two thousand and three, when I purchased the house. Uh, I also have another house in the Village of Bronxville. And that's at thirteen Willow Circle. And I've owned that house since nineteen seventy-two. Um. My questions had to do with drainage and the synthetic turf. Uh, I'm very happy the engineers took time express, uh, explaining the drainage problem. Um, and as you know. The Bronxville Field, they put in the synthetic church, I'm sorry, the synthetic turf. And they had a nor'easter. And the water. Rushed from the field. Into the attached houses of Field Court. And mine is on the other side. Uh, on Willow. And luckily, I had a no black foe backflow device on my sewage, so I got very little in the basement. However. The Field Court side. Had water up to the first floor. And the people that didn't have the no backflow device. Had raw sewage. In the basement. Uh, and raw sewage coming out of the uh, waste lines. And we're all familiar with the millions of dollars. That were spent. On diverting that water. And trying to prevent that that problem. So my question has to do with the. Uh. Irrigation system. And what that might contribute to. The Village of Tocco. Drainage. Then I have two other questions. Has to do with synthetic turf. And I know if you're soccer or. You're playing ball and you fall on grass, it's very different than when you fall on synthetic turf. That synthetic turf. Can be cutting to the skin, especially if you have younger, you, uh, you have young people playing on that field. And my question has to do with the type of. Synthetic turf that's being put in there. Is there an improvement on it? So that young children playing will not be injured. Last question. Um. I've read that over a period of time. The synthetic turf can break down. And they can release toxins or chemicals that are part of the synthetic turf. So that would be. My question, especially for young people playing on that field. Thank you for taking my question.
So can you elaborate on the uh, the drainage and I don't know if you're familiar with what happened with uh, Bronxville?
Well, so it sounds like from, from the description that 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 I heard. That involves sanitary sewer and a nor'easter. That there was some significant storm event that impacted not only the drainage but the sanitary sewer system. Um. You know, these there, these systems are designed for the hundred year storm. Have we gotten? Storm events that have created situations that have a rainfall intensity. Of higher than a hundred year? We all know that we have and in low lying areas, they've caused the problem. I can tell you that the design threshold that your village has. And that the New York State D E C has. Uh, we comply with. Um. We have no sanitary sewer in in the area. I find it very unlikely that even in a severe storm event. The drainage from this site, which is controlled, would have any impact on the area sanitary sewer. But you have to be describing a significant storm event for that to have happened. Um, and no, there there's not a design solution to, you know, hurricanes. Um. But this is a well-designed system. It will control runoff for up to a hundred year storm, which is about nine inches of rainfall, which is a lot of rain. Um, and I think at the end of the day. You know, there are some places like Bronxville that are low lying. That trying to solve drainage problems is very difficult. And I think you've described one of those areas and the challenges to solve that kind of a drainage and sewer problem. This is not that situation. And and we're able to do a much better job of controlling the discharge from this site. And because we have gravity and we have a drainage system and we have a new design, all which play into being able to do a better job. I think I'll let Chris answer the questions. About, you know, the the synthetic turf questions.
So for, thank you, Chuck. Um, and thank you for the questions, uh, Mr. Powers. Uh. For the safety of of uh. Young people playing sports, uh, or adults playing sports for that matter, uh, on a synthetic versus a natural uh, grass field. Uh, there have been a lot of studies um, showing that synthetic turf is actually a bit safer to play on. Given that the the traction on these fields uh, is more consistent. Uh, and the grading of those fields is more consistent than. Uh, a natural turf field where you can develop potholes, you can develop sinkholes. On those fields over time where you will, you know, it's very rare that there is a a carpet or infill issue. Uh, that would cause a tripping hazard. Um, for the um. Hazards or the health risks of the infill, uh, there's also been a number of studies over the last twenty years. Um, that have have proved that given the right infill, which is a cryogenically broken rubber. Uh, where where they freeze the rubber, uh, it's all recycled rubber, so they freeze the rubber uh, with um. Uh, down to a a point where the rubber actually breaks apart, shatters like glass. So that the surface area of that rubber is low enough that it does not exude any S B O Cs or V O Cs into that soil. Uh, or exudes it into the air where it would be hailed. So um, there has been no health risk. Um, and it has been. Excuse me, it has been extensively studied over the last thirty years, especially over in Europe where uh, the regulations are a bit more severe. Um, and they've been using these turf fields for soccer endlessly with, uh, you know, hundreds of thousands of hours of playing time.
What's the, what's the lifespan of the uh, the field?
Uh, the infill can be recycled almost endlessly. Um, that that can be vacuumed up and re-spread. Uh, it just needs to be recite, uh, you know, respun to make sure that the silica sand, which is a clean sand. Um, you often use to make glass. Uh, is mixed properly with the cryogenically frozen rubber. The carpet itself has about a ten to twelve year lifespan. So the filaments of. The strands of that carper, that carpet that, uh, is what would be equivalent to the grass strands. Uh, end up fraying over eight, ten, twelve years. And by the time you reach that ten, twelve year mark. Um, they come in with machines, they vacuum out all that rubber and and silica. Um, they take up the carpet, that carpet goes to a facility where it's recycled. They put new carpet down and then they replace that same infill that was vacuumed up back out on the field. Uh, so it's a, it's a very streamlined process that only replaces what's needing to be replaced.
And what's the lifespan of the silica and the recycled rubber? Does it have a lifespan? Is that half life? Two thousand years?
Yeah, it's it's nearly, it essentially endless. Um, if if there's, um, you know, some. I've had certain projects where, you know, there's been so much dirt tracked into the field. That there's no way to get all that dirt, they have to wash that. So what they end up doing is sending that infill to a facility where it could be washed. And they bring new infill in. Uh, but again, they don't just dump it, they do end up processing it again, so. Um.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Uh, Dr. Powers, good?
Thank you.
Okay, um. Teresa McCarthy?
Yes, hi, Teresa McCarthy, forty-one Rose Avenue and a resident here at forty-one Rose for thirty-five years. So I've been turning on to Rose Avenue, uh, for about as long as you can imagine. I'm kind of sorry to see uh, the first rendering of the project that the architect put up. It is uh, to me reminiscent of North Avenue in downtown New Rochelle. Uh, not a surprise since that's where I own a college is. Um, they have twenty-one N C double A sports programs there, it's a division one school. And Concordia College, you wouldn't even know that soccer field was there for all these years. It sits down, the little building you referenced, living here thirty-five years, I'd have to go search for that little building that was on that property. Um, we have real serious concerns about the drainage, obviously, but there are additional concerns as well. Um, to me, it's the most institutional rendering that I I could see here and all the talk about managing. Trucks through the construction and parking during events. The architect began saying it was going to be a practice field. By the time he was done speaking, he mentioned. Uh. Referees, medical folks, uh, speaker, loudspeaker systems. We need that for practice fields? It's not obviously going to be a practice field. How much is this field going to be used? Uh, has anybody really looked into that? And honestly, I'm appalled at the view of what it looks like from Rose Avenue. Uh, right now, living here thirty-five years, I can tell you how many times I had to call the Tocco Police. How many times I had to call the East Chester Police, you couldn't get an emergency vehicle down Rose Avenue. And that was while Concordia was just having one of their little baseball games. That nobody even really attended. No one walks from the Meyer Athletic Parking Fields all the way over to that soccer field. Hasn't been happening for thirty-five years. So I'm not sure how you're going to change. Human behavior by thinking you're going to have two parking attendants helping people do that. Um. There are true, real, serious concerns and I'll turn those over to the rest of the folks that I see in the chat. About the drainage. Many people on this call tonight have had sewage in their basements as recent as our last heavy storm. Right on Rose Avenue. So, uh, I just wanted to make those comments and now we can really get into the to the heart of the matter.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Donato Macaro?
He skipped over me.
I think he skipped over my husband, he'd like.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you guys were together, please, I'm sorry.
We just sit together.
Okay, go ahead.
After COVID, I don't know if it's. After twenty months of COVID, it might not be the case.
There you go.
I I just want to comment uh. Briefly about the drainage issue.
Okay.
Uh, I heard Chuck say that um, he wasn't familiar with the drainage i- i- issue down at Everett's, um, what's the road?
Rose.
Rose, what's the other one there? The road that goes?
Crawford.
Crawford. Now, uh, I've seen. The um, catch basins come up. In a two to five inch rainstorm and. I won't tell you what happens when we have a a rainstorm like the ones we had. Ida or the. Sandy or whatever, those those uh, hundred year storms. The drainage issue, the the impact of that. Uh, field and the drainage, however it was designed. Uh, the it, the impact to. The uh, Rose Avenue drainage, Rose Avenue Crawford never has to be studied. Because droplets are going to have a terrible impact. Um, I I heard the discussion about the metering system. I could see that metering system get shot off and maybe end up in my attic, quite frankly. The rush of water off of twenty-two down Rose Avenue is like a a a river. It's like a tidal wave. Um, you could take a surfboard and and catch a good wave in a in a moderate rainstorm. Um. I don't, the bathtub approach is is fine. That bathtub is going to fill up pretty fast. And to say that there's going to be a metering. And to say that there's going to be a metering system, the metering system isn't going to work, I can, I swear on my mother's grave, it's not going to work. It's a good concept, it works in other areas, absolutely, it's not going to work there. The issue of the buses parking and that, what is it, you cross over the- Meyer, that's not going to happen. I have turned down Rose Avenue and over the course of many years, and buses park, I'm surprised they haven't used my driveway. They park all the way up the hill, they park on Everett. And we call Eastchester, Eastchester says to call Tuckahoe, we call Tuckahoe, they say to call Eastchester, and nothing happens. When I saw the letter from Concordia, that was a nice letter. However, there are times I've turned down Rose Avenue, and it looked like the San Gennaro Festival because grills are set up, there's all kinds of, and really, not only is the emergency vehicle issue a big concern, and it's a really big concern, particularly with the schools up the block and a very heavily concentrated area in Bronxville Manor. I can't tell you how many close calls pedestrians getting hit, people coming out of the tennis place. It's unbelievable. So I, and I can see this practice field being used as a playing field. You know, it's great to call it a practice field. What do you need, like my wife said, what do you need speakers for?
And all those lines, it's going to be lined, all those things didn't exist. You never even realized Concordia was even using that field. And now we're going to turn it into downtown North Avenue. And honestly, that is, to me, an egregious mistake.
The speakers, I would also would like to know if a noise impact study was done to, relative to those speakers, because I'll sit in my bed on a Saturday morning here to the tennis balls from the tennis court. Bang, bang, bang. That's a nice sound, but I don't want to listen to announcements or, you know, get your free hot dog at the stand or anything like that on a Sunday, Saturday morning. As you can tell, we're quite passionate. And you would have had to live through moderate rainstorms, my neighbor next door. I mean, our driveway is a river. Because we can't, the water from Stebbins comes down like a wave into our basements, and we've had sewage and we've had five sump pumps going, and it's a nightmare, so.
Let somebody else talk.
Well, I'll let somebody else talk. I'm sorry, I didn't have an extra drink with my dinner, I would have been calmer.
All right, thank you for your time, Ray. Mr. Macaro?
Thank you. My name is Donato Macaro, I live at 40 Deerfield Avenue, which is just a few blocks away from the field. As mentioned earlier, I'm a lifelong Eastchester resident. I'm also a part of the Iona family. I went to Iona Prep, and I've also taught at the college for several years as an adjunct professor. So I'm really glad, I'm welcome to Iona family, to the neighborhood, I'm so glad that it's happening. But I do have the concerns I've been raised already, I won't spend too much time about the concerns about flooding, it's well-known that we have that problem in our neighborhood. I live three blocks away, and I know that, you know, many neighbors complain about flooding, especially in that specific juncture at the bottom of roads. I'm very, very familiar with Rose Avenue there. I've mentioned earlier at another part of this board meeting that I walk a lot, and I walk down rows like at least three or four days a week. I've used the fitness center for 10 years until COVID. I really missed the fitness center, which was at Concordia, but it's right there across the street from the soccer field, so I've seen, I would go there almost every day, and I know the traffic situation there, I know it's very difficult with parking already with just the tennis center and if there's a fitness center. So I share Teresa and Bill's concerns about the distinction between a practice, as a practice field versus some other events. And it was funny because I thought I wasn't listening carefully or not, but I felt like there was this bait and switch, like first there was going to be just practice, but then hearing about the refs and the sound system, so I felt the same way. I hoped that the board will, you know, be very mindful of this and take this into considerations of any agreements that are made with Iona. I also want to raise a line-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'll just finish, and then you can decide what you want. My second concern is about the side, the lack of sidewalks on Rose Avenue. When I looked at the rendering, I saw that, it looked like there was a sidewalk, but I'm not sure, but there was some kind of walk that was on the drawing. But I'm actually an appointed member of the Traffic Parking and Advisory Committee for the Town of Eastchester, which is strictly speaking the unincorporated area of Eastchester. Interestingly, this field is at the juncture of three municipalities, we've kind of said that in different ways, but you know, it's, it basically intersects Tuckahoe, Bronxville, and the unincorporated area of Eastchester. So I'm on this committee that really just deals with the unincorporated area of Eastchester, but a few families are very concerned about the lack of sidewalk. If you live in Tuckahoe, you live across the street from Post Road, and you have to walk down rows to get to the bus stop, there's no way for the kids to walk on a sidewalk. So that, you know, I hope that's something that Iona is being concerned about on either side of the road. If it's on the south side of Rose or the north side, it seems like a critical thing that should happen. It might be a Bronxville Village, you know, Highway Department thing, but I think that Iona should be very concerned about the safety of their community, because it's not just the residents, it's the safety of the community. And I've always wondered about that for the 12 years or so that I've been living in the neighborhood, about the safety of that. I don't mind walking on the grass, but it doesn't seem like, I think for elderly and small children, it's probably, they're forced onto the street, and there's all these cars there because of the coming and going on roads there. So I just want to raise that as a concern, and if there is a, if there was a, if the rendering that showed what looks like a sidewalk is there, how does that affect the flooding as well?
So just to clarify a couple of things, right? In the original approval, there was a sidewalk, there was a crosswalk that was placed from the tennis center, that gate that goes to the tennis center across the street to the field, and I believe the sidewalk was extended to that location. And they were going to be putting in, if I remember correctly, don't hold me through this, were those flashing stoplights that you press if you want to cross the street, and then just flashed the lights, it'll stop, so it allows, it tells the cars, the vehicles to stop, and then allow the pedestrian to walk across the street? I think that was part of the resolution, correct or wrong, Chris?
We had talked about that along Route 22. I don't remember that.
I'm sorry, yeah.
And it was a state approval process that would be involved there. But the school was, before the project got too far along, the project was shut down. But there was talks of the school going to the state to get that for Route 22. We didn't have that in the plan for Rose Avenue, though.
But there was a crosswalk from the tennis center to the field, correct?
Yes, yes. Yeah, and just to answer the question quickly, Don, for the sidewalk along Rose Avenue, it's a little bit of an unfortunate situation there with, like you're saying, the three different jurisdictions of Bronxville, Tuckahoe, and Eastchester, of whose responsibility it is to put that sidewalk in. From a private owner standpoint, I don't think anybody here in their right mind would put a sidewalk on their property where the slope of the land is 20% plus. Because you would then be responsible for anybody slipping and falling on that sidewalk. If the town who owns that right-of-way wants to put that sidewalk, it's up to then the private owner to maintain it. But they're not then, you know, they were not the ones to put it there. It's an issue for sure, given the slope of the land at Rose Avenue there. We put that, to answer your other question, we put a walkway that enters in the existing gate of that southwest corner of the property, and then there is a staircase that goes down that slope, which is the only way to get down safely from that high corner of Route 22 and Rose Avenue.
And I guess the other question is, I noticed it's going to be primarily used as a practice facility. However, there is going to be instances where they're going to have regular athletic games, you know, soccer match, so the majority of the time is, you know, during the week, whatever, it's going to be practice facility, but there will be games played on the field. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Correct, and just, you know, this field, whatever the Iona has for the use of the field, I mentioned practice as that's what they're envisioning currently. But, you know, what a field could be for use there, you know, that's there, up to them. For previous use of this field, just to reiterate, Concordia used this for, you know, a majority of the time was practice. They used portable speakers for almost every practice, which was a considerable issue for the neighbors, where they brought out, you know, quite a large, you know, it was quite a large speaker that he would drag onto the field with a small dolly and play announcements and music during practice, every practice. This instance of placing speakers was simply to take out the risk of where that sound is traveling to, to place that at the north side of the property and face those to the south. So this was, you know, to try and, to help mitigate any issue from noise. And there was, again, there was a lot of practice on that field, and they hosted games as well. So for use of the field itself, nothing would be changing from how Concordia used it.
Okay, so next is a question from Steve Rubenstein to everyone who monitors the flow with a heavier rain such as Ida, what happens? Steve, would you like to speak, or? Well, then welcome.
Yeah, it's just, you know, we've had a number of 100-year storms in the past couple of months. So a 100-year storm doesn't really help. I'm hoping that the flood, flooding issues, especially at Crawford, where it can reach five or six feet high, will be helped by changing the field at Concordia. But I think that if you're going to change the field, that we also have to look into dealing with the drainage at Crawford, because the corner of Crawford and Rose floods whenever it rains, the other day it probably flooded. And, you know, the most recent storm was Ida, and believe me, there was a lot of rain, and if they could make that catch basin or underneath the field the gravel twice as deep, would that help, you know, instead of the 100-year flood to 500-year flood? Thank you, I'll listen off-screen.
Yeah, just my understanding is that Eastchester is looking at that, because when, I believe, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, I know you think you said you spoke to Margaret, and they're working on something or studying that?
I know Mr. Williams sent the plans over to Eastchester, and I think he spoke with Margaret, and she said that they'd be looking at it, because I think they're going to do some improvements down there themselves. So they want to make sure they work with these plans. Right, Bill, is that correct?
These were sent over early this morning for them to send out to their engineer to review everything and coordinate with their plans on what they were doing for stormwater.
You know, if there's any sort of planning in place to kind of address the flooding issue that happens in that, unfortunately, that bowl that is in that area?
I do not, Antonio, I would have to find from Eastchester.
Okay, thank you. All right. Kathleen Carney, are you there? Are there any dry wells planned for the side of the question? I think as we indicated earlier, in essence, we're creating a bowl, the applicant's creating a bowl, there is anywhere between 12 to 18 inches of gravel, perforated pipes, and slowly that will be released into the sewer system. Hopefully that answers your question, unless you have something else to say?
Yeah, this is Bill Carney. Yeah, no problem, I live at 101 Middleton Place, which is on the corner of Crawford and Middleton. My house faces the softball fields, I've been here for 16 years. So one of the things, you know, I think a lot of folks in the neighborhood are excited to have Iona come in and partner with Iona, I've spoken to some people out there already. A few things that I have concern that most people have mentioned. One is Iona renting out that facility, because other people have mentioned, you know, that facility was really only used by Concordia, and it was barely used at all. The soccer field at least, very rarely used. You know, if we're going to be renting it out to organizations outside of just Tuckahoe, and you have people from out of town coming in, it's going to significantly increase the traffic problem there. You know-
Can I answer that question before you move on?
Sure.
We did have this conversation at a workshop, and we were concerned about that, you know, would they rent this facility out to, let's say, somebody from Poughkeepsie or whatever, just pick a local town, right? And really, the, from what I've been told is, you know, it's going to be potentially, like if Tuckahoe wants to practice on their field with a baseball team, if Eastchester or Bronxville, it's really going to be offered to the local community, not anyone from, let's say, further north or further south. So it's going to be local, if anything.
Yeah, and that's great, I mean, I think anybody in the community would appreciate more fields for kids and, you know, the community teams that we support, so if that's the case, and we're going to limit it to just, you know, within our Bronxville, Eastchester, Tuckahoe, I think that's great. You know, Concordia was always, I think, well-intentioned with regard to parking. And, you know, I had conversations with them, as well as I think some of my other neighbors, in terms of the parking, and they always said, no, people are going to park across on 22 or the Meyer Athletic Facility. It never, it never materialized, there were always-
In all fairness, that plan was never implemented, so I just want to make sure we're giving this a chance.
Yes, totally, I get it, but, you know, people have called Concordia before, complained about the parking, and they always said, no, we tell people to park here. If, you know, this does get approved, I really hope Iona would follow through with the parking attendance and make sure that people do park in the facility, the Meyer facility or across Route 22.
Before we move on, Gary, can we put anything in the resolution that basically says if they get X number of calls, I don't know, can we have them come back and review, or?
Yep, we've done stuff like that in the past, Antonio.
All right, so when we write the resolution, when you write a resolution for this, okay, let's make sure we put, you know, if these guys, you know, get X number of complaints because of this parking and no one's managing it, you know, they should come back to the board or whatever, have some sort of recourse that, you know, other than saying, hey, you called the police department, then you get one of these, you know.
I think what we did in the last resolution with Concordia, we said that they have to strictly adhere to their, it was their, you know, traffic plan. You know, if there are complaints, then obviously Bill Williams can revoke the site plan. Or we can trigger something like we did, I think at the Broken Bowl, Antonio, where if there are a number of complaints in a given year, they would have to come back to you guys for, you know, to review it again.
Okay, so let's think about that, let's make sure we put some sort of a trigger in place that if these guys, you know, are not good neighbors, there's a sort of a penalty associated with that. All right, I'm sorry, Bill.
Yeah, no problem, and I think the last thing, again, that people have touched on is the drainage. As I mentioned, I live on Crawford and Middleton, and it's kind of at the bottom, if you're familiar with the area, it's kind of the bottom of Bronxville Manor. It's the bottom of 22, and it's the bottom of Bronxville Manor. I'm kind of in the, you know, the bottom of the bathtub, if you will. And with all due respect to the engineers, I totally understand, they understand drainage and no drainage. They don't know drainage in this area. Like I mentioned, I've been here 16 years, I've seen everything. And the sewers that you're talking about that will feed to Rose and Everett, those eventually go to the sewer system on Crawford, which then goes down towards Sywinoy. And the issue really is that those pipes underneath Crawford feeding to Sywinoy are not big enough to handle all of the water now coming into that area. And a lot of the runoff onto Crawford comes from the Concordia softball fields. You know, I can send everybody here pictures and videos. If it's, you know, during a storm, if you want to come down to Crawford, you can see it's like a waterfall coming from the softball fields. All the clay from the softball fields is feeding into Crawford and feeds into the catch basins there, and then that, those catch basins and those drains can't handle that drainage. So if we're going to feed in more water to it, it's only going to exacerbate the issue. And I know people have talked about, you know, well, we're planning for a 100-year storm. About a year and a half, two years ago, they put up a new house right across the street from me, and I went to Eastchester Town Board, and I said, well, what is the plan for- And I went to East Chester Town Board, and I said, well, what is the plan for drainage? And similarly, they had engineers and they said, we've got a plan for a hundred year storm. We're putting in twenty-seven dry wells. They did all that, and that house flooded three times in a matter of two months. And each time, the fire department had to come and pump that basement out. I mean, significant amount of water, six feet of water. So everybody along Crawford um is feel are feeling the effects of that drainage. Um so it's it's really an issue, and I understand, you know, you're gonna have be able to feed that uh that drainage into the uh into the system, but any more feeding into that system is just gonna exacerbate the issue. So again, this isn't just, you know, a soccer field issue. It is a much larger issue. At some point, the softball fields need to be addressed, and there needs to be a put, you know, dry wells put in there, some kind of uh stormwater uh maintenance system and retention system there as well. Um and as many people mentioned, East Chester's working on this too. So I just really implore the board to really work with not only East Chester and Bronxville, so that all three municipalities can come to some kind of agreement, so that we're not just creating more of an issue on on Crawford. Um and that's that's really all I had to say. Again, we look forward to to working with Iona, having him in the neighborhood. We just wanna make sure that anything that's done is done carefully and and thought out.
Mr. Chairman, i- if I may, could I address that, some of the drainage comments?
Please.
So I think there's a, you know, there's an interesting perception that this synthetic field creates more runoff. And and the reality of it is, you currently have three plus acres from the soccer field draining into the system that you've described as insufficient, uncontrolled. In reality, this system is designed so that less water from our site goes there. Does it solve the problem of the the Middletown Crawford drainage system and the inequity piping system from there going downstream? No, it does not. However, we have taken our site and improved the drainage to the extent that we can. So we've been a good neighbor. We've implemented a good system, and we're not putting more water into the area where you have a problem. I can appreciate the situation. I understand these insufficient systems. These are deteriorating infrastructures that need to be improved. All those things are correct, but the perception that this project creates more runoff into that system is not the right premise. This design actually, and it'll be it'll be proven out by your consulting engineers to the board, so there'll be somebody else affirming what we're saying, will put less into that system. Measurably solve or or reduce the problem? Probably not, but relative to this three acres, it will be an improvement.
No, I I I totally understand that. And again, I I I understand where uh Bill, Mr. Carney's coming from. Uh I I sense his frustration. I, you know, i- in of all the neighbors that live in that that area. Um again, uh it kind of behooves, I understand your system will not um you know, uh make things worse, uh it'll make it slightly better. But again, you have to understand, you put yourself in their in their position, and you know, they've been through hell, I can imagine, you know, and so I understand where they're coming from, and I I and I know whatever we can do. I know you're you're doing your best, and I know you're you're following codes, and you're following state requirements. I get all of that, but you have to understand, you know, there's real people at the end of uh at the end of this, and you know, they've been through a hell of a lot. So I I appreciate everybody's uh uh, you know, um position. And again, I just, I I know everyone's trying to do the best for everyone uh in in this community. Anything else, Bill?
Yeah, just a quick question, Chuck. Yeah, again, I'm a layman. I'm not an engineer. So right now, you know, that water runoff is not really directed anywhere, because there's no, there's 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 no piping, there's no drainage per se.
That's not correct. That's not correct. It doesn't, it does, it's, that field is so compacted that you might as well consider it to be a paved surface. So any water that hits it does run off, and if you stand at the southeast corner on Rose, where the field comes out, you'll see where the water comes out, uncontrolled. So no, it it doesn't just sit there. It doesn't just go away. It drains off that site uncontrolled and contributes to your problem downstream.
Okay.
Yeah, I again, I think the system will help the uh will help somewhat, uh to Chuck's point. It's not gonna solve your problems, because again, you have so many sources, especially the roadway. It's just the roadway is coming down into that bowl. Uh I mean, East Chester really has to do something about that, I would imagine.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, guys, um. Uh Mr. Conway?
Uh yes, I, um Ed Conway ate Winslow Circle. Um I'm coming from the other end. I'm on Winslow Circle, and so many of my houses below the soccer field. Um and many of the houses here are. So my concern, number one concern, is the drainage also. Um and what that might do, we were lucky in the last storm, just using a wet vac to keep uh the basement. It's a high water table. But my question is, if it goes over the nine inches, you know, the one hundred year flood, I think we have to look at it not to engineer it that way, but I think according to the zoning code, we try to make things better. Um in terms of flooding and erosion, what happens if it's ten inches? Does it make things worse? Um you know, the way that the field is sloped, it's coming into, you know, our backyards. It goes down this little swale. So our concern again is also the flooding. What happens if it's nine inches or ten inches? Could the field actually make it worse? You know, what if it's twelve inches? We know we shouldn't engineer backwards to the one and the one hundred year flood. We know it's gonna get worse. We've seen worse. We should think about how do we make it better up to a certain point? And where does that excess go? You know, if it goes over that one inches or two inches, how much water is being poured in, and where does it go from there? That's what I'd be interested in from this survey. Um so that's the number one concern we have on Winslow. Um also, the speakers would be concerned. I mean, it seems like, you know, we want the field to be used. We want Iona to use it. We want the local communities to use it. It'd be great if that happens. Um but the also the concern would be the speakers. How often would they be used? Would they be used every time they rent out the field? You know, if there's no stands, it seems strange to have the all this parking if it's just gonna be used for a practice. There's also the tennis people who use those parking areas now too. So that's a concern, wanna flesh out a little bit more.
Um before you leave that, before you leave that, right now, there's no proposal put speakers per se. They're just running the infrastructure in place.
Yes, no, I understand.
Part and as part of the, and they're facing away from the homes and and going toward the field.
You know, I said, I just, I just wanna make, cause things happen, so it's just more of managing expectations.
Right, and I and I think I think it's important that we place, and I mentioned it earlier, and perhaps you missed it, is a decibel level uh on a maximum decibel level on the speakers that they can go to. So uh that's one way of, you know, trying to kind of uh mitigate any sort of somebody just clanking up the volume and saying, hey, whatever.
And personally, at Winslow, we had no practice problem with the soccer field. We loved to see them out there and play. It's great. We love the kids to go out there and play. Um it's then, you know, with the speakers, how often would they be used? Concordia used it, one practice is one hour. They had two or three games a week. No problem, you know, but if it's rented out, then you're gonna have speakers on there for, is it every game? You're gonna have it continually. That would be a concern from that perspective uh for quality of life. Um and also with the parking, you know, needing attendance for parking when it's just for practice, that just doesn't.
Game day, game day only.
Okay, but it's interesting, that field, I know, and I I hope Iona has um you know, games there and everything else like that, but that field is not a regulation soccer field, as Concordia said, so. But we hope it is used, and it's great for game day to be used that way. So that's not a problem. Um the one thing from my perspective is the fence. Um I'd be very happy with the chain link fence the way it is, the wood. I know over time, it wears down, it breaks down. We have a lot of these old trees. Um where Concordia sometimes would not keep them up. We'd have to ask them to come in and clear out the brush. So um you know, the chain link would be probably better aesthetically for us, but that's the me personally preference. So those are just my points, but the key thing again is the drainage and not managing it to a one hundred year flood. Um that's looking backwards. I think we know need to look forwards. And what happens if it's a ten inch or a twelve inch that we had? What does that do? So thank you, and thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Uh the initials here are TC. Uh the message is, let's keep in mind Bronxville Schools had an engineer and contractors and survey stating that these very same drain systems would be adequate. Those systems have failed horribly three times and have been reconstructed and still continue to fail. I'm not sure who TC is. If you'd like to speak, by all means, please join us. All right, I'm gonna move on. Kevin? What else? Would you like to say something?
Hey, Antonio, it's Kevin from twelve hundred Street again. How are you doing?
Good.
It's been an entertaining evening after being through many of these. Uh Motorbike Mike asks here, covered one of my questions, and I've had a couple more since. Um a couple of things popped in mind. I'll just say them out loud. One, if the intent is to rent out that field to local sports teams, I do, I do think there should be something in writing, right? I think somebody put that in the chat. Because uh there there is a lack of trust, not only by Concordia, but Iona and the community. And I I do not believe their intent is to rent it out to local sports teams. I believe their intent is to rent it out to regional sports clubs. So I do think as a community, we need to get clarity on that, and as a zoning board, I don't believe that's your responsibility. That's ours. But if they're saying, hey, we're gonna use that field for East Chester soccer or Tuckahoe baseball or or Bronxville soccer, we need to get that clarity. My original question um was specific to what Donato asked, which was about the walkways, right? And as you come across from Hobart onto twenty-two, and we we live in the neighborhood, Antonio, there's not a safe landing spot to walk in up and down that street. And if we're if Iona's gonna spend all this money like Concordia committed to, I don't remember seeing in the drawings a path or walkway. If you cross, you know that little walkway in Hobart there, you come across twenty-two.
Yeah.
As unsafe as the corner of twenty-two and Winter Hill is, Hobart, Rose, and twenty-two is even less safe. And that's where all the kids from Bronxville, Tuckahoe, everybody can use to cross that path, right? I see the carpenters around here. Our kids move back and forth here. Can we get some clarity around the walkways and path? Northbound on twenty-two, southbound, and what that looks like on Rose? Cause if that's not included, I would ask the zoning board to say, hey, we're investing this money, and I get the guy, Chris, who said nobody wants to build a sidewalk, but I would argue that whoever's responsibility that is, we need to address that in this project, right? And if it requires steps like they do in the rest of the village in different parts of the community, for that to be addressed, right?
I I think that's Bronxville side of the road.
We all point, we all, we all point fingers, and if it's us having to go.
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. I I believe.
I think it's Bronxville, Antonio. I think we went through this last time, and I'm pretty sure it was Bronxville.
Uh so the is Bronxville, correct?
That's my I think you're right, Gary. I think you're right from. It's not the baseball side, though. It's the soccer field side, what we're talking about right now. That walkway from Hobart over to the soccer field, if if we're, if this soccer field is on.
Hold on, Kevin, hold on a second. Can you pull up that, your site plan? Again, Kevin's question basically is, uh if you look at the Hobart Street, you have that crossway, right? And he's basically saying that when you cross the street, there's no sidewalk, other than uh.
Walking a bunch of stones there, Antonio.
Correct, yeah.
There's an existing gate there that would be refurbished, and that would lead onto the site. So if anybody's coming from either the western portion of Concordia campus or the rest of the neighborhood or Hobart Street, they would use the existing crosswalk across Route twenty-two, where there's sidewalk uh both sides, um and enter that gate. That gate would lead you down a set of steps to the field. Um for general pedestrian traffic along Rose Avenue, you know, the easiest way to get onto this site, if this site is your destination, the safest way would be to use that gate uh across directly across.
Hey, Chris, I don't mean to interrupt you. There's no gate there. There is no gate there. That's dirt, rocks, and a bunch of signs. All the time with my kids, kids walk up and down that. The whole community uses Rose Avenue. And and that corner where that big green tree is, where you got some stones and steps, and I can't see it zoomed in here right now. There's nothing but dirt there right now. There, if there's a gate, it's down by the corner of that that pitch that you're talking about.
Hold on one second here.
There's a wall there. There's a wall. There's no entrance.
There is, there is actually, there is a rod eye engage there, believe it or not.
I don't know if you guys can see the screen I shared here.
Yeah.
That's the gate right there.
No one uses it.
That gate would be
To the field.
Right.
But the field's a two hundred yard, another fifty yards back to the left.
So then we go back to, hold on. We go back to the plan here, and you see, this is where the gate is, if you could see my cursor here.
Yep.
That leads to a path that go down steps to the field elevation here. So there is a a, as we talked about before, there is a significant slope here. These are two foot contours where we're going down twenty feet very quickly. So you know, there's no way to to make that safe without stairs. Uh and we're using that existing gate that's here, uh which can secure the site as well to access the field, right across from the existing crosswalk across Route twenty-two.
You clear, Kevin?
Yeah, I'll I'll go look at it tomorrow. I'll I'll type, I'll take some pictures. The last thing I'll say about the parking is, there's, however we do this construction, logistically, guys, that's my, what about Mike, Mike S. said it, and I know he's on, he knows this. Rose Avenue is a thoroughfare for the kids to get to and from school.
Yeah.
This is, any construction is being done during the school year, the coordination and planning needs to be explicit. And if Iona's sincere about their intentions with those parking slots on Rose, move all the tennis players over to the to Meyer Lot now. Because it's a problem now, and it doesn't get better, as McCarthy said, as Donato said, as Carney said, as everybody else has said. Those parking slots along that street right now, if they're only gonna be, they should be designated for coaches. And and if Iona's sincere about their intentions here, unlike Concordia, who's who's been our neighbor, like move everybody out of those parking slots right now. It's it's a hazard. And if it's only gonna be on game days, and this field isn't gonna be used for games, why does anybody allow to park there right now? Like, those slots should be empty twenty-four seven, and they're not. And maybe I'm wrong in Mike's statement, and you guys can all call me out on that, but it's it's ridiculous, the parking, what happens when there's actually an event going on.
Yeah, thank you. Uh Chris, can you uh take this off the screen, please? Can we just take a a two minute pause? Uh I just need to shoot some Sorry, guys. All right, um. William McCarthy?
Yes, first of all, I want to compliment everybody on how eloquently they spoke in comparison to my semi irrational outburst, but I'm calmer now. I guess what I'm hearing from listening to everybody speak is, is the following. Now, I'm, I'm an Iona guy myself. I went to Iona Prep, well, my siblings did, my nieces, my nephews, excuse me. So we're an Iona family. And I remember the day I learned that Iona purchased the Concordia properties and I said to my wife that night, that's going to be a problem. Not because of Iona, but because in comparison, Concordia was a good neighbor and we've spoke of issues with the ball fields and the parking and the traffic. It was really relatively quiet and it was problematic. Iona College to me is a powerhouse in comparison. So that powerhouse effect on our neighborhood is, is what concerns me. And I've listened to the conversations, you know, take drainage off the table. It concerns me of, for a lot of different reasons, safety, traffic, litter, you name it, you're bringing in a powerhouse into a relatively suburban area. It is not North Avenue. And I, I would hate to see this section of twenty-two be turned into a North Avenue. Okay, relative to the drainage. And now that I'm calmed down, yes, what the bathtub and the, the system that's been described for that field may mitigate the drainage issues, but it's, it's still going to be an impact. When that bathtub fills and it will fill very fast or the force of the water will be so great, it'll go right over the field. It really needs to be seriously looked at. And in concert with Eastchester's problem, I'm, I'm not in the bathtub. My home and my neighbor to the, to the left and the right, we're on the, the up slope of that, that, that bathtub down at Crawford and Rose. And we've had, we've had the fire department here in a storm, we've had sewage backing up into our homes. We've spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on repairs to damage from the water. And you know, I hear that, oh, this is going to make it better, but I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see that happening here, particularly with the new neighbor coming in. And like I said, I'm an owner, I'm an Iona guy. You know, if I lived on North Avenue, I would, I would welcome them, but I don't live on North Avenue. I live here and I, I don't want to see my neighborhood being turned into a mini Nera Shell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last two questions and then I think we're done for tonight, guys. Mr. LaCarroll, by all means?
Yeah, thanks. I just want to bring it back to the, the entrance on the post road. I, I'm sorry to like, I feel like there's an elephant in the room. What's the point of that gate? Why would people be even using that entrance, right? All my time in this neighborhood, I've never seen anyone walk in that way. I'm just thinking that in real life, that's not going to be used. I mean, people are going to either, like, hopefully, if things go the way it's planned, people will park on the other side of the campus, right? And go through the, go through the.
That, that was meant, that is meant to be for, let's say, a student who's taking a class, you know, in the Concordia educational side of the, the campus, walking on Route twenty-two on the west side of the street and then being able to cross in the east side of the street. So that was meant to be the pedestrian access for the college itself, not, you know, anyone else, you know, parking and, you know, that's basically, it's pedestrian from the, the other side of the street, basically.
I mean, it, it actually makes sense to try to get them to go that way, but it's not the shortest distance between two points. So I'm wondering if they're really going to use it because and I guess too, the gate, the entrance would have to be more engaging in some ways. The way it is now, it's like locked or something. It doesn't feel like it's an entrance. I know there's, I, we saw the picture, I see that there's a gate. No, I've never seen it used ever. And I guess there's, maybe there's a way to make it more obvious as an entrance, but I just don't think, I just don't know why.
I, 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 I think the reason wasn't ever used before is I remember seeing a padlock on, I think. So that's probably one of the reasons why it wasn't used.
There's a padlock.
So, so because I recall when, you know, when my son was younger, we used to go on a field and play soccer or use the net, whatever. And we always had to go around because that gate was, always had a padlock on. So again, I'm assuming the padlock is going to come off so that, you know, and so that people can get access to the field, that the students can get access to the field.
Thanks.
All right, last question for the night, guys. Mr. Conway? Can I own a post?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, so, so I don't know if you heard earlier, I see a question, can I own a post these plans publicly for the residents as well? So we're going to ask for the digital versions of these plans and Gary will have, will try to get our village administrator to put them on the website so that you can have access to them.
Thank you.
I hope that answers your question. Yeah, can we try to get that done? With the, the project, you know?
Yeah, both projects.
Projects, basically, right. All right. So, so Chris, if you could just send over your, I think, I don't know if you have your, your digital plans, but if you could send those over.
I sent the link earlier today to download those plans. If there's any issue with the link, I think somebody, one person had an issue with the link.
Yeah, I did, actually. I tried to download it and it expired.
Oh, I sent a new link today.
Okay.
So that you had the link for last week. I heard that the link expired, so I sent a new link today.
Thank you. So Bill, if you could just have, maybe I can send that link over, I'd like to see the revised plans as well. Thank you, sir. All right, guys, thank you. So at this point, I'm going to make a motion to keep the public hearing open for another month. Can I have a second, please? All right, all in favor? First of all, let me thank everyone this evening. You guys were great. You asked some great questions and everyone was very civil. I really appreciate that. And we're, again, I think we're all trying to, to get to the same place. We're trying, you know, to, to make sure that, you know, whatever we do, you know, the, we try to do as best for the community as possible. All right. So thank you all for attending and please come back next month. So at this point, since we have no other business, I make a motion to close the, this meeting. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you.